Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is April 4th, 2017, 6:00 PM. I'd like to invite you to stand and join us for an invocation tonight to be led by Pastor John Hubbard of Life Church, and I'll follow that by leading the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to invite anyone to join me in prayer if you would like. Let us pray. Dear Jesus, we thank you for this time to come together as leaders of our community. We ask for your guidance and support as we make decisions that will greatly affect our community. We ask that you would supply us with wisdom and insight as we strive to be good stewards of the city you have given to our care. We also ask that you would watch over and protect those who lead our community, both those on this council and those affiliated with this council. And bless each and every person here as the leaders commence with tonight's meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see we have a council member absent this evening, and we should... Yes, Councilman Muntz.
I move we excuse Councilman Joel Servadius.
Second.
Got a motion by Muntz and a second by Campbell to approve the council member Joel Servadius' absence as excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of agenda. Yes, Councilor Almberg.
Thank you Mayor. I move that we approve the April 4th, 2017 agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Almberg, second by Muntz to approve the April 4th agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're moving right along. We've got a couple of presentations tonight, a couple of proclamations. And I think our first proclamation is for Arbor Day, and I believe Mayor Pro Tim Pecow will be reading the proclamation. Looks like we've got some people from the Parks Department here.
Hello, good evening. We have Mr. Hank Nydam, the Oak Harbor Parks Director, to receive this proclamation. Hello. And this is a proclamation celebration of Arbor Day in Oak Harbor. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewables resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are, planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, Mayor Robert Severance and council members of the city of Oak Harbor, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2017 as Arbor Day in the city of Oak Harbor. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their heart and promote the well-being of these and future generations. Signed, the 4th day of April, 2017, Robert Severance, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. I'm proud to say that we are, as the city of Oak Harbor, have been named Tree City USA for the 13th year in a row, and that's by the National Arbor Foundation. This year for Arbor Day, we're going to be partnering with the Garden Club, and we're going to plant about four Gary Oaks in the Holland Garden area. The Gary Oak Society has also got something going on for Arbor Day, but Laura will be addressing that a little bit later on. I want to thank the city, I want to thank the many volunteers, Gary Oak Society, to really promote the planting of trees. And in 2016, we added over 200 Gary Oaks within the community. So it's renewing the Gary Oaks and also preserving, along with the other trees within the community. So, thank you.
Thank you Hank. Okay, our second and last proclamation is going to be read for us tonight by Councilor Wassinger. Earth Day proclamation.
Thank you. I'm going to be reading an Earth Day proclamation. Whereas April 22nd, 2017, is the 47th anniversary of Earth Day, founded by Gaylord Nelson, then a US Senator from Wisconsin. And whereas the first Earth Day led to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Water and Endangered Species Act. And whereas Earth Day is now celebrated by millions of people worldwide. And whereas a natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and robust economy, there are currently methods and technology available to help us live in harmony with our environment. And whereas human activists around the globe are causing environmental... human activities, excuse me, around the globe are causing environmental damage that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life. And whereas there are economic, environmental, and social reasons for state and local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices. And whereas Earth Day offers citizens an unprecedented opportunity to commit to building a healthy planet and flourishing communities. Now therefore, we, Mayor Robert Severance and the council members of the city of Oak Harbor, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2017 as Earth Day in the city of Oak Harbor, and we urge all citizens, businesses, and institutions to celebrate the special observance. I'm going to present this to Hank Nydam as well.
This year for Earth Day, we've got employees of Starbucks, they're going to come out, and they're going to do a beach cleanup for us on, I think it's April 22nd, actual Earth Day. Going to be meeting at 10 o'clock down at Windjammer or Flintstone Park, so if anyone wants to get involved, come on out and join them. Thanks.
Thank you Hank. Okay, that concludes our presentation section, so we're moving now to item three, citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are properly... are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone and try to limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And it looks like we've got a couple who have signed up. First is Melissa Duffy.
Thank you Mayor Severance and City Council, and I want to start by sharing about a poster that I had when I was a child, and it said, "Every great oak was once a little nut that held its ground." And in 2009, our state legislature declared the Gary Oak to be our official oak tree. We also have another official tree, which is the hemlock. But the Gary Oak is the only oak tree that is native to Washington State, and it has an over 10,000-year heritage with Native American usage. So on Earth Day, the Gary Oak Society, Laura here is going to also give a presentation, we are going to invite everyone to the post office garden, which we are making into a native plant garden. This month, April 23rd through the 29th, is Washington State Native Plant Appreciation Week. Native plants are drought resistant and pest intolerant, so it's less work in the garden. So, we're going to have... we invite everyone, we're very excited because we are restoring the post office garden to a completely native plant garden, and we're also going to do a little walk that day of the town's noteworthy oaks and share some fun facts, including Dorothy Neal's story about her shotgun threat to keep the Gary Oak in the middle of the town. And she told me this personally before she passed. So you'll get some local legend and lore, fun facts, and people... I really encourage families to come, all ages are welcome. And it'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 on Earth Day, April 22nd, the start off of Native Plant Appreciation Week. And here is Laura.
Thank you Melissa. For the record, I'm Laura Renninger with the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. Since we came before the council last September, the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society has been very busy planting trees in our community. In October, we partnered with the Navy and the city to plant 32 Gary Oaks along Regatta Drive, which creates a habitat corridor connecting the Navy Grove near the library to the well-established Gary Oak trees in the old town area. In December, we planted 15 Gary Oaks around the Navy Lodge, and additional two were planted just last month at the Lodge. Recently, Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society visited the Midway High School Horticulture Classroom taught by Krista Jackson to introduce the kids to Gary Oaks and share why they are important. To celebrate Arbor Day, Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society will be planting three Gary Oak seedlings on April 25th at the corner of Highway 20 and Cabot Drive. This is behind the Midway School, Public School Admin Building, behind the parking lot there on the green belt that is very visible to the public and especially people traveling up and down Highway 20. As Arbor Day approaches, we celebrate the iconic Gary Oaks in our community. Tonight, Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society would like to gift each one of you on the council your own small token of the Gary Oak to go along with Melissa's comments, an acorn ornament made from local acorns and Gary Oak wood. And also for the public, we have brochures on what the Oak Harbor Gary Oak Society does, and just to tell a little bit more about our story. And thank you Melissa. We can... You can find out more about our work on our website, which is a really comprehensive website, at www.okeharborgaryoaksociety.org. Thank you.
Thank you Laura. Nice report.
This is Melissa Duffy. May I add one more thing? As you take these ornaments, along with that is a responsibility as representatives and leaders in our town to make sure that we keep the oak in Oak Harbor. So that means to protect, preserve, and encourage the education about our valuable and precious Gary Oaks. It's such a special heritage that many towns in our state don't have. We only have about 5% of the original habitat left, so it's very precious. So we encourage you to think about the preciousness of our town's oaks. Thank you.
Thank you Melissa. Okay, anyone else for citizen comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item number four, which is our consent agenda. I think we have a little business to take care of regarding one of the items on the consent agenda. Yes, Councilor Muntz?
I move that we pull four F, please.
Okay. So we have a motion, I guess we have to...
Pull it or delete it.
Do we need to vote on?
Staff would like to have that one removed.
Okay.
To remove it.
Okay, so the motion is to move, motion by Muntz, second by Almberg, to just pull it from the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are down to A through E, and then we have G. And I noticed that in tonight's audience, we have Jackie Herta here. Jackie is item number C, appointment being appointed to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And I think our last item is the reappointment of our planning commission position number one, Mr. Greg Wassinger. And my thank you goes out to the both of you and everybody that volunteers so many hours for our fine city. We can't thank you enough. So if there is no further discussion or action, the consent agenda items A through E and item number G will be approved as presented. Okay? And thanks again. We're on to item number five, mayor's comments, and I have several things actually to comment on this evening. I guess I'll start off by yesterday, Rhonda and I got a private tour, well, just a couple of us, got a nice tour of the PBY Naval Air Museum. The people there are planning a celebration of flight dinner and auction on May 20th, 5:30, and that's at the Oak Harbor Elks. They've got some big expansion plans for the museum, and hopefully will be looking at ways to fund that, or even talking about a name change in the future. So, PBY Museum, there's lots to see in there. If you haven't been in there, I recommend that you schedule a visit and go through and see what they've got. They've got... For everything that you get to see inside of that museum, they've got a lot of additional items stored and some neat plans there. So, yes, Councilor Campbell.
If you talk to them, right, you can see my Chief Petty Officer coat.
Well, I'll be darned. So that's in the museum, huh?
Yes, sir. No, I'm not that old.
Okay, okay, moving right along. So, we get... The AWC sends out a list of up-and-coming educational opportunities, and just to let you know, we were in attendance, most of us were in attendance at the AWC annual week... Well, it wasn't a full week in Olympia, but we went to the Hill and attended meetings. And just to prove that, I notice on the very back here, there is a side shot of me, if you can get a close-up of that. But more importantly, on the front is our very own Beth Muntz. So, what a great shot, and it's proof that she was there also. So, okay. We had, I think since our last meeting, we've had some really crummy news, losing three of our fine citizens who have been involved in so many ways in Oak Harbor, Lou Mahler, Bob Pettijohn, and Gary Wallen. Gary was actually serving on our left board and had just accepted the position of president of the Oak Harbor Main Street. He and his wife Martha have been dedicated to so many things for so many years in our city. It's going to be a huge loss. The Boys and Girls Auction was held, and I was sorry to have been out of town and not be able to attend that meeting. I usually do, but it looks, from the sounds of it, as though they had a very successful evening. 100... It looks like 175 guests were present bidding on their items, and they received $97,000 from their fundraising efforts, as well as a grant from Island Thrift for $30,000 totaling $127,000. Wow, what a great evening for them. Also, I wanted to announce the Community Police Advisory Board has an open seat, position number one. Jeff Campbell just finished his term and said he'd like to give that opportunity to somebody else. So if you have an interest in the Community Police Advisory Board, please contact us, ask for Nicole Tash, and we'll see that you get an application. And then finally, we just had several articles in the paper regarding "April Fools" in the Whidby News Times. And, you know, we get some interesting phone calls here at City Hall from time to time, and I think it's important that I let the viewing public especially know that Top Gun will not be filmed at NAS Whidby. The Deception Pass Bridge will not have a $5 toll. The city will not implement a $1 of flesh fee. However, I kind of like that idea for people that live in the county. If I could figure out a way to do that, I'd really think about it. And the Seahawks will not be training at Camp Casey. So, in spite of what you read, what you might have read there, those were April Fool's jokes, and thanks for your understanding. Okay, council, time? Anybody got anything? Yes, Councilor Heisen.
Thank you Mayor. I have a couple things. First, I want to remind the public that the Oak Harbor Library will be hosting Island County for Narcan Night next Tuesday, the 18th, at the library from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Good opportunity to learn about the current opioid epidemic, what steps our county is taking to try and deal with that, and what we can do as a community to help. And also, in the spirit of Earth Day, on behalf of Bob Halahan, he's a school board member, environmental advocate, and just all-around nice guy, but he's thrown together an impromptu beach cleanup this Saturday. It's going to be out at Joseph Whidby State Park from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So I think the plan is to park at the northernmost west beach parking area adjacent to Joseph Whidby for 1:00 to 3:00 PM, bring your trash bags, et cetera, and we'll spread out and see how much progress we can make this weekend. And that's it.
Thank you. Yes, yes, Councilor Campbell.
Thank you. I have two things. First is a question. Recently, I read a newspaper article that was not April Fool about all the homelessness in this county? And I was wondering, I was out last week, I was wondering, is the city participating in any way in that exercise, other than spin cafe? Everybody knows about that. Are we given any money? Like the county, I think in the article said, they gave $120,000 to this effort to try to clean it up. So are we participating?
You want to take that one?
Sure, I'll go ahead and take it. From an economic point, we don't have something in our budget that's similar to the counties. Counties and cities have a little bit different revenue sources, and they have some they can put that way. But other than the spin cafe, we don't have a budgeted line item for homeless-type activities.
Okay. Do we have people involved?
We have people involved, different things like that. We have a lot of our park staff, our police department, and a lot of others that are involved with it directly, so the city time things we do spend in that manner.
Okay, thank you very much. My last, second and last item, if you're paying attention to television, especially the news and newspapers, this next item might strike a little nerve. I can't count the number of... Well, there's not been any days in the last year or so when I have not on television, either in newscast or someplace like that, seeing people going at each other like tooth and nail, and it sounds to me a lot of times like they're trying to cut that person's throat without touching them. It's really getting, I think, out of hand. With that in mind, I want to inform everyone that there is an organization that's been founded on the south end of the island. South means nothing, that just happens to be where two of the six people live, and that's where we always meet. It's called Civility First, and it's an attempt to get everyone to stop, hold their breath for a second before they jump at somebody's throat on a subject that's probably not the best in the world to argue about. So it's an attempt to get us all thinking, don't argue about everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Wassinger.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that I will be absent from our next council meeting. I can't say because my children might be watching, but we are... We have plans that they can't know about.
Yes, Councilor Almberg.
Thank you Mayor. I wanted to bring up a topic here. At our most recent Thursday morning staff meeting that we have regarding the wastewater treatment plant and the progress, Councilmember Servadius brought up a topic about including the windmill design in the roundabout at the entrance to Windjammer Park at Bayshore Drive. And we had a fairly extensive conversation about the importance of having the infrastructure in place in the process of doing that, recognizing that we have land... possible land acquisition requirements depending on the size of this thing. And the other thing that both Joel and I feel pretty strongly about including that in the time that we're doing civil work and the dirt work and the disruption to the entrance to that area. And another thing to consider is since we always have a portable stormwater pump to drain the water from that general area, we may want to consider having a permanent lift station that can be located in the area of that roundabout, perhaps below the future windmill, so that we're not constantly hauling portable pumps down there. Now, I haven't done any analysis or have any numbers with that. It's a concept. It's an idea worth considering to see if it makes economic sense for us. And I would like to know if we can have that on our next... that item on our next workshop agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go ahead and put that as a discussion item on workshop for this month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mayor.
Anyone else? Council comments? Going once, twice? Okay, we will move on to the city administrator comments. Item number five C.
Okay, thank you Mayor and council. I've given a copy of my report to each of your stations on the diastere, so I respectfully submit my report to you. And I'm going to jump right to our two presentations tonight. First, we have Jeff Orswell from Orswell Events here to give us an update on the marathon
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jeff Orswell with Orswell Events. It's nice to see you all again. We're just giving you a quick update here about two and a half weeks out from the 2017 Whidby Island Marathon. Here's a quick rundown of where we're at, registration numbers-wise. Pleased to report that that center column is the numbers that we finished with in the 2016 race, and you can see where we're at year-to-date in that right-hand column, with the exception of the kids' dash, which mainly happens on event day or event weekend. We are currently above all the ending totals from last year, so we're real pleased with the numbers and hoping that a strong push in the last two and a half weeks here gets us over that 2,000 mark. No big surprises in the breakdowns on age or the events they've chosen to run or the gender, but we're very pleased also with 58% of our participants that have currently registered coming from further than 50 miles away from Oak Harbor. Switching to the next slide. We... On every race that we produce, we try to have, you know, a strong returning base of runners year over year, and in order to accomplish that, we always try and come up with something new, something, you know, a new reason to come participate. So this year, the traditional method of race photography is, you know, you're shot two or three times, and then an additional two or three times at the finish line, bib showings that they know who you are. You're emailed these photos of you participating in a race that you've trained for for months and months, and then you have the option to purchase them. More recently, we've moved to trying to offer free participant photos, so we'll actually have six to seven photographers placed throughout the courses, and each participant will be emailed approximately a dozen photos in days after the race. This program's possible through Brandman University stepping up to... This program's possible through Brandman University stepping up to sponsor it. So you can see the images will be branded with the event logo as well as Brandman University's logo. They're free to participants. And what we found is people are excited to immediately post them to their Facebook page, share them with friends. So it becomes a marketing tool also with those photos going viral and showing the, the beautiful scenery of Whidby Island and people having fun running in the streets. We're also excited this year that we'll have your, your name on your bib, so it won't just have a number associated with you, but it'll have a name or a nickname that you choose when you register. And, and the bibs are spectacular. Jared on my team, who last addressed you a couple of weeks ago, actually contacted the gentleman who shot that photo and asked for rights to use it. So the, the photo is actually, I think, a fun backdrop on, on the bib. So it'll have your name on there. And then finally, this year, full marathon participants will get a hoodie. It's still breathable, lightweight running fabric. Half marathoners will get a long sleeve shirt. And then 5Ks, 10Ker will have a short sleeve, all performance running fabric shirts. But as I've shared with you many times before, if you've paid that premium registration fee to run the marathon and put in the months and months of training, we want you to kind of feel the love a little bit more on event day. Additional promotions that we're doing for all participants, obviously your shirt. We have customized finisher medals. If you look at the, the little sails that are hanging on a, a toggle there, it'll either say 3.1, 6.2, 13.1, or 26.2, depending upon the race that you ran and finished. We talked about the bibs with names, free photos, and then obviously our post-race celebration. Events like this, as you know, are possible only through the generous donation of time from hundreds of volunteers. We've been working hard to recruit volunteers, everything from packet pickup and registration to course monitors, finish line volunteers, and water station volunteers, which are a key part to all this. We still need more. We need more folks to step up and come help us out. So those of you watching at home, we would love for you to go to RunWhidby.com. You'll see giant buttons that say run or support. From there, it's, it's pretty turnkey. And if you do click on the support button, it'll take you through a number of different opportunities to volunteer and support this race on race weekend. So we're, we're very pleased with the progress to date on, on the race. Hoping Mother Nature comes through in these last couple of weeks to get some spontaneous last-minute registrations. But we're feeling good on it and excited for race weekend to get here. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Councilor Wasner?
Not so much a question, but just a comment. I was at the high school and they have been announcing on their Wildcat TV, I guess that's how they do their morning announcements, I'm not there that often, but they have been advertising every morning, I guess, for volunteers through the high school for the Whidby Island Marathon. So I thought that was really neat.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, so I hope that that works out. And I love the hoodie. It's not enough incentive for me to run the full marathon quite yet, but maybe for next year if we continue and you bring the hoodie back, I may think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we met with the athletic director there a couple of months ago now, and they were very excited to be hosting the expo again. And she brought it up and said, I have dozens, if not hundreds, of students that need community service hours, and we would love to plug them in. So happy to hear that they're helping out with that.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Brett with our wastewater treatment plan update.
Good evening. It's time for our Clean Water Facility project update. We're reaching some interesting milestones on the project right now. The structure's coming out of the ground. We are, been working on decks for a while. This deck here, oops, sorry, I pushed the wrong button. This is what we call the nine line, which is the west side of the structure. This has been, always been our critical path on the project. So completing this, we're ahead of schedule on it right now. So completing that allows us to start moving to the west. So it is within the team, a very big milestone because this we've been driving for since June. Notice this deck in here, you can't see it very well from this picture, but there's probably about 30 electrical conduits in that, in that mat right now. And so we're seeing a lot more of the electrical coordination going on. Some places we have to put extra rebars in because we have so many conduits. But interesting, interesting thing is, this is what actually supports the deck. So down below, we have these I-beams down there, and this is what they call a peri-form system. And it supports all that structure above it. And so we have all this kind of stuff down there, and it's kind of, kind of fascinating. But the kind of interesting thing is you go down there now and it's like cathedral, you know, it's a 20-foot-high ceiling and it's, it's actually kind of fun. I was kind of looking at it, it's one of those things when your engineers, every once in a while, he goes, geez, I didn't think it'd be that big, you know? So anyway, recent activities, design-wise, we did receive the 30% windjammer plans. Those showed up yesterday, so we are starting to look at processing those. We are continuing to work on our SCADA software development. We're going to be start buying hardware pretty soon for those activities. Construction-wise, we continue placing concrete on, mostly on GNP number eight. Number seven is actually pretty much done. All we have left on that is we're doing some finishing activities. The self-perform work remains ahead of schedule and below labor estimates, we're hanging in there. I'm hoping for a couple of good weeks now if the weather's turn. Construction activities for GNP number nine, number 11, number nine's the mechanical electrical. I think the last two weeks, we've almost processed 80 submittals. That's 80 pieces of equipment we're looking at. So that's starting to pick up. And like I said, we're starting to put a lot of conduit in the ground. On number 11, we're starting to see all the building stuff starting to show up. If you recall, GNP number 11, we had allowances in there. We bid like 20 packages and got some no responses. We rebid the fire protection system and the wood framing packages. Wood framing was a disappointment, even though we rebid it and we canvassed and everybody in the region, we're making cold calls trying to get people to bid it, no bids. So we are proceeding with the self-perform on it. We did get two bids on the fire protection system, so that was good news. It came a little bit higher, but I'd saved some money on another allowance, so it kind of washed out. Parking lot, if you remember, the Wells Fargo parking lot that we acquired last, about a year ago now. We have closed that for construction of water control structures. Again, the parking around the ball fields, people have become used to that, it's going to be more congested. The parking closure will be indefinite, but we're hoping to, to restore the pedestrian access probably within a month or so. We have to get some pipe, some utilities in. With the south, closure of the south area, we're actually accessing the construction office from Pioneer Road. That will continue until we get the other, other entrance open. Because of what we have to do, we have to ring a doorbell. So if you want to come visit us, ring the doorbell and we'll come down and get you. Hopefully, we won't be doing that very long. It is kind of annoying. Funding, nothing new on that. We're still waiting legislative approval on the 2018 SRF allocation. With 30% plans, we're starting to pursue funding opportunities and grants. We've got a master matrix we're pulling together for that. April 10th, we have planned to bring a resolution in, accepting the 30% windjammer design. We need to have some acceptance on that so we can start moving ahead with these applications. So that's the major point for us in terms of getting things moving. And we heard Councilor Ombert's comments to that too, so we'll try to accommodate that in, in the resolution. Schedule-wise, we're moving right ahead. We do schedule updates on a fairly frequent basis. Right now, we're up, we call Oak Harbor 29, with our 29th schedule. In the last two years, we've gone through 22 of them. Things change around, bring more contractors in, but the good news is Oak Harbor 29 is bringing us in on time. Public outreach, of course, you can reach us at OakCarborCleanWater.org. You can call us at 914-7000, or call our work extensions. We can be reached at TreatmentPlant@OakHarbor.org. And our next community dropping hours is April 10th, and we will leave the door open. Questions?
Any questions? Council? Councilor Ombert?
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, the, the latest bids that came in with the fire suppression and the lack of framing, et cetera, doesn't that conclude our major portion of the cost for this project?
We still have the GNP number 13 to procure, but in terms of...
13 is the...
Site mitigation, streets.
Site mitigation.
Streets and all that kind of stuff.
Specifically just with the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
Where are we with that? When are we going to have, this is what our projected cost is?
We're working on it now. And part of the conversation is we brought HDR, the contract you approved on the consent agenda. So we're bringing all that into focus so we can give you a concerted, you know, integrated presentation on that. So we should be working on that pretty quickly.
Okay. And so the next question and the final question, when?
Hopefully soon. I can't commit, yeah, but yeah, we recognize urgency on it, and we were talking about it this morning.
If you're looking to me, I would say the sooner the better, but we can't give you a target day right now until we hear back when the, the contract's approved. We get the scope of work in place.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I would hope this summer. I'll put it that way.
I just marked soon on my watch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Back to Dr. Merriman.
That's the end of my report.
That concludes your report. So we are going to move to item number six. This is our last item for this evening. It is Resolution 1703, the 2017 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments Docket. After this is discussed, I'll, I'll ask the public, I'm looking out at the audience and I'm doubting that we're going to have a lot of comments, but just in case you choose to comment, you will get a chance. Please limit that comment to three minutes and state your name clearly into the microphone. And I'm going to turn it to our senior planner, Cac Kamak, at this point. Cac?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Here to present the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. This is something we go through annually, and I'm here pretty much every March. This time, I'm a little late in April, but usually I'm here in March in the first or second meeting, going through the annual amendment process. So I'll do it once again for all the newcomers in the city who are watching it on TV. This will be a chance to catch up on the, on the process we follow. So one of the reasons that we have this process in our comprehensive, in our code is because the state allows us to amend our comprehensive plan only once a year. So we have to develop a process by which we can collect all the items that we need to amend or change or discuss and find a process to take it through every year. So we have codified it in our code under chapter 1815. So the process basically starts in October of every year where we have a notice out in the paper. We actually do two notices in the paper, just reaching out to the community and asking if anybody has any ideas for any amendments. During that time, we're also discussing the amendments with the Planning Commission and the City Council, and we're taking input from them as well. And so in the month of December, we form, or put, compile it as a preliminary docket, and we advertise it to the public for comments. The Planning Commission holds a hearing in January, and then they make a recommendation to the City Council. City Council usually holds a hearing in March. We were late a little bit this year, and I'll explain why later. Once the City Council adopts the final docket, we do most of our analysis and discussion on those amendments through April and, from April to August. And then we start doing some process-related notification to the Department of Commerce and SEPA analysis for those amendments. And by November and December, we're looking at taking action on them. So that's the annual process we go through. So what's on this year's agenda? We have an update to our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. The last time we did this plan was back in 2007. At least, we initiated that process and adopted the plan in 2009. Even though our parks plan is valid to us in terms of policies and the direction, the state kind of asks cities to update their plan every six years. We're past that six-year period. So it is a timely update to do, so we're going to take it on this year, and hopefully we'll get through it this year. We have the Capital Improvements Plan, which we do every year. Minor amendments usually, just moving schedules and adjusting numbers based on updates, so we'll go through that. The environment element. So the city is also required to adopt the Critical Area Ordinance update along with the 2016 update we did last year. We didn't have enough resources to complete that section with the 2016 update, so we had reached to the state and asked for a 12-month extension, which they were giving to many communities that were still in, in the same boat as we were. And they granted us that 12-month extension, and so we will be probably considering an update to our critical areas in the next three months. The Planning Commission and the City Council will start to see that information. Probably have a deadline of June, I think, where we would adopt new critical area ordinance. The chances are that the adoption of the ordinance may lead to some policy changes in the environment element in the comprehensive plan. So we are just keeping it open, just in case we have to amend any policies. We can do that along with our update process. We also kept the economic development element open for any ideas that may come through, any changes that we want to consider from an economic development standpoint. So we've included that in the docket. The UGA resizing, this is something that is why we're here in April as opposed to March, is we found out that the, in March, that the county has this as a discussion item on their docket. And we thought it would be best to reflect it on, on our docket as well because UGA is related to both the county and the city. And we, we fully don't know what exactly this will entail. However, we just know that some of the policies within the countywide planning policies, which we've all adopted, are being discussed, and there are some challenges in its implementation, so we may consider some changes to it. And considering changes to the countywide planning policies could potentially result in some changes to the UGA. We don't know that yet, but we'll keep it open again for a timely change. If the county and the city decides that there is some validity and some changes, then we have an option to change it this year. If we don't have it on our docket, then we can discuss it, but we say, okay, let, we won't be able to change it till 2018. And sometimes time makes a big difference. So those are the items on our docket. We have amendment criteria in our code to review all, all the docket items. I won't go through them in detail. There's a table in the report that analyzes each one of those according to the amendment criteria. Just thought I'd put it up there for people who are interested. So we request that the City Council conduct a public hearing for this, and then if the council may choose to approve the resolution and adopt the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, before we do that, let's, let's open the public hearing and ask for any, anybody like to speak to this? Going once, twice? Okay, back to the council. Any questions, input, suggestions? Ask Councilor Muntz.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kamak, on the UGA resizing, you said you have no idea what they're looking at on that. When we had that presentation off of Fort Nugent Road, and we were looking at the left side, if I'm going to the left side, some of the area, and it was in our UGA about annexing, and then we don't know if something's really going to be developed or not, but it was clear that we had an enclave there. And why that ever happened, if they're resizing or whatever, I'd like to see that as part of our UGA. I just don't understand why it goes like this and then there's this huge space and they're not included. And then it starts again. It just, you've, you've left a vacuum kind of there. And so I would want to see why that isn't included and why it can't. It doesn't make logical sense to me. You're going da-da, da-da, and then whoops, and then da-da, da-da, da-da. So that's my only suggestion, please.
Absolutely. If it ever comes up as staff, we are aware of that kind of misconnection there along Fort Nugent where we don't have property that's in the city along the frontage. So yes, if there's an opportunity, we'll definitely take that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Other council? Yes, Councilor Ombert?
Thank you. Yeah, and a follow-up on Ms. Munson's comment. Did that annexation, it's kind of a strange time to ask this question, but I don't recall that we created an enclave when we did that annexation.
It's not a non-clave. I think it's just a gap. We haven't surrounded that area yet. It's, it just extends into the county. It's just that section of Fort Nugent just has a gap in terms of the city limit.
Because the annex properties were contiguous to the city limits and within the UGA.
Yes, it's contiguous with the area north of Fort Nugent, and that's how it's contiguous, not to the east of it. So there's a gap between Fort Nugent Park and the property that was annexed, and I think that's the property Ms. Munson's talking about.
Then I have a couple of other questions here. On the UGA sizing, and you, just tell me, are you predicting which way the county is leaning to size up or size down?
Um, you don't know that...
And what is the logic for going either way?
Yeah. I'm not sure which way. Our building capacity analysis shows that we have enough area in the city to accommodate a 20-year projected population. The UGA sizing may be driven by different, for different reasons by the county. That's the thing that we are not sure of yet, and we'll try to find out what the underlying discussion and issues are. We're not completely sure what they are yet.
Okay. Well, that's a good segue to my next question for you. When we do the inventory, or inventory of the properties available for sizing in the UGA, in the formula, is there an allowance for a certain number of potentially available properties that can be developed for housing of some type? Is there a percentage allowed for those people who just simply do not want to sell their property?
Yes. We have in our calculations a certain, what we call a market factor, and we have agreed on certain percentages through the county-wide planning policies on what kind of percentage we would use to kind of deduct from the overall available land. So, for example, I think we're, for all vacant properties that are in the city, there's a deduction factor, even though they are all kind of available for development. There is a market factor where we know that all of them are not going to be available for development. So we do it by percentages, not exactly by area or anything. So, for example, lots that are larger than the minimum lot size by three times, let's say, and they have a house on it. So there's potential for infill development to create two lots. But we know that in the next 20 years, not all lots that are three times greater than the minimum lot size will develop, so we have a percentage to deduct that as well. So in our calculations for the capacity analysis, we do have those percentages in.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Heisen.
Sorry, really quick, this, I apologize for the laziness on my part because I didn't go and read the Planning Commission minutes, but was there any public input when they held their public hearings?
From the county, you mean?
From, no, from the public, when...
I don't recall. Nope.
No? Is it?
Okay. Anyone else? Would the council like to proceed? Yes, Councilor Munson.
I move we adopt Resolution 17-03, approving the docket for the 2017 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Second.
So we've got a motion by Munson, a second by Heisen, to, I'm not going to read it again unless you would like me to, okay? It's a little different than the, than what's posted up there, but end result is to approve the resolution and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kamak. And I think with that, we are done for this evening. No additional business, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.